Good evening and welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting, Monday, April 13, 2015. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Pastor David Lydic, Midlands Bible Baptist Church, 2407 Chandler Road East.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, for the privilege. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this special occasion and thank you for a mayor and city council that knows the importance of seeking your aid and your wisdom and your help, and I pray, Lord, you lend that tonight. I pray, first of all, you'd help them to know what's right as they discern and consider any matter here this evening, but then knowing what's right, oh God, give them determination to do that which is right, not that which is convenient or politically correct or whatever the case may be, but, Lord, they seek your wisdom. Give them that, I pray, and I'll thank you for it and praise you for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Lydic. Item number two, Sabrina, could you please call roll? Actually, standing in for Sabrina is Megan. Megan, could you please call roll?
Mr. Carmichael?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
Here.
Mrs. Blood?
Item number 2A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act, posted the entry to the council chambers. Item three, approval of minutes and advisory committee reports, 3A, approval of agenda. Mr. Berlowitz.
Yes, I would like to request that the council consider rescheduling item 12G. That is an item that I put on the agenda for proposed consideration, proposed new employment agreement. It was scheduled for earlier today for pre-council executive session. Since we did not have a quorum, obviously, that meeting was not held, and so I would request that the council reschedule that or agree to postpone it till May 11th. At our next meeting on April 27th, both Mayor Sanders and council member Modri will not be present, so the next meeting at which that could be properly discussed or reviewed by the council would be on May 11th, so I would request that.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Modri.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Well, let's...
I need to move.
Yes, Mr. Buckley.
Let's just get moved through the agenda, and then when we get there, a motion can be made.
Okay. So, the approval of the agenda, I need a motion. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote. Oh, I'm sorry, hold on. Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we defer item 12G on the agenda to our May 11th meeting.
Seconded by Mr. Hanson. Any other discussion? We will vote first on the...
Amendment.
On the amendment. Please vote on the amendment.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Now, we will vote on the approval of the agenda. Do we need a motion for that? Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. In effect, we're modifying the agenda, so I would also like to move on item 7C, which is the ordinance to eliminate the pre-council meeting, and I apologize, I haven't had a chance to discuss it, but we've had some discussions going on, and I don't think we have really come up with some solutions, and with Councilwoman Blood gone, and in two weeks, we'll have Councilman Modri gone and you gone, I would like to defer that over so we have some time to work on it until that same May meeting that we just did, which would be...
May 11th.
May 11th. So, my motion is to carry over item 7C to the May 11th meeting.
I need a second. We have no second, so the motion fails. Okay.
We vote on the agenda.
So, we vote on the agenda at this moment. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 3B... Mr. Preister.
Go ahead, I'm just...
Item 3B, approval of consent agenda. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 3C, approval of minutes of the March 23rd, 2015, regular and pre-council meeting of the city council. Mr. Modri. Oh, it's kind of...
It's under consent.
It's under consent, thank you, that was fast. Item four is also under consent. Item five, special presentation, we have three proclamations, Arbor Day, Earth Day, and Fair Housing Month. Mr. Preister, if you'd like to join me? Are there folks here for Arbor Day? I believe Arbor Day and Earth Day go hand in hand. Is that stepstool for me, Terry?
Always good to have a stool.
If you could stand this way along the podium, that's great. First one I will do is Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska City, and whereas Arbor Day is now celebrated annually throughout the nation and the world. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs by moderating the temperature, clean air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other products. Whereas trees in our city increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of business area, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, now therefore I, Rita Sanders, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, do hereby proclaim April 25th as Arbor Day in the City of Bellevue, and I urge everyone to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge everyone to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Now, I have a proclamation for Earth Day, whereas the first Earth Day was celebrated in America 45 years ago. Today, recognizing that all human life depends upon the earth and one other for our mutual existence, well-being, and development, the need to protect our environment is acknowledged worldwide, and whereas this year, as the City of Bellevue enters its 160th year, we are proud to celebrate Earth Day with all Sarpy County cities on April 26th as the Bellevue Public School Lead Activity Center in Bellevue, Nebraska. The Sarpy County Earth Day celebration is an opportunity to educate and inspire environmental awareness and encourage the conservation, protection, and the appreciation of our natural resources, and whereas a green community can be achieved on an individual basis, individual businesses level through education efforts, public policy, and partnership with local organizations, enabling a viable green economy to form and thrive, and whereas it's imperative for municipal government to recognize and participate as an example to the community and its residents in leading environmentally friendly practices, including reducing waste sent to landfills, conserving energy and water, and creating a healthier and safer environment. Be it therefore, we're still resolved that I, Rita Sanders, Mayor for the City of Bellevue, do hereby proclaim our city's commitment to another 160 years as Earth Day-friendly community with an even brighter, cleaner, greener future. Therefore, I do hereby proclaim, pronounce 26th day of April 2015 as Earth Day in the City of Bellevue. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
Please.
Hello, I'm Ruth Richter, and this is my cohort, Madeline Lee, and we both volunteer for Green Bellevue and for the Sarpy County Green Team, and we want to share a few words after receiving this wonderful Earth Day proclamation. Thank you, Mayor Sanders, for your continued support. This past week, Madeline and several volunteers attended the council meetings in Papillion and in Gretna and in Springfield and in La Vista to receive Earth Day proclamations. And now, with Bellevue's proclamation, we have all five Sarpy County mayors proclaiming and standing and calling for the increase in environmentally friendly practices, including lowering the amount of waste that we're sending to landfills, conserving our water and our energy, and creating healthier and safer environments for all of us to live now and in the future. And I'm not sure that this would have happened without Bellevue's leadership. In 2010, the mayor, at that time, Mayor Mixon, opened their, the Earth Day proclamation saying, "Whereas, the mayor of the City of Bellevue, with full city council support, has established the Green Bellevue Committee to coordinate efforts toward a greener, cleaner, healthier, and sustainable community." And he encouraged in that proclamation that all residents, schools, businesses, churches, and others participate in the city-led, ongoing green effort. And many of us who heard that proclamation or who found out about Green Bellevue's efforts and goals and missions from that point on took that to heart. Today, Green Bellevue is a 501(c)(3) organization, and we have an 11-person board. We're still led, our president is a city council member, Councilwoman Preister. We have 10 other board members, kind of equally spread among business, residents, and government volunteers, and we have approximately 800 volunteers that participate with us. We have alliances with about 60 other organizations, and in the last 18 months, we forged a effort throughout Sarpy County to establish a green team, and it's really out of our common desire to decrease the amount of waste that we're sending to our landfill. All of this began with Bellevue's leadership, and whether or not you were serving in your role at that time, and I know many of you weren't, we still want you to feel very, very much a part of this effort, and we would like to ask for your continued support. Thank you. Madeline?
I'd like to extend an open invitation to the Sarpy County Earth Day Celebration and Expo that will be held on April 26th from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Bellevue Public Schools Lead Activity Center. The event is free and friendly for all ages and is made possible by over 60 of our area businesses, nonprofits, schools, churches, and government agencies coming together. The primary purpose of the event is education about how each of us individually can do our part to lower carbon emissions and create a healthier community. There will be vendor displays and exhibits on recycling and composting, renewable energy gardening and plant sale, and e-waste collection, delicious local foods, and elementary school art display, and environmental artists, and much more. We also offer a 5K and Zoomathon fundraiser. For more information, you can go to the Green Bellevue website at greenbellevue.org/earthday. The program will be interesting, including attraction show and acknowledging leaders in the community. I will be accepting my environment champion trophy and will say a few words, too. We really appreciate the city council members and city staff arrive and show your support. We hope the entire community will come and see and learn. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to say that one thing you might consider, too, is in August of each year, through the Bellevue Community Foundation, there's an, you know, applications for grants, and it looks like this organization would fit right into that. Last year, we, I think we had about $25,000 that we donated, and actually, we only had $15,000 in requests that we filled, so, but you can contact me, I know, I'm your councilman, so, and also president of the Community Foundation, but I think that those grants go up to about a $5,000 per group, but if something like that, give me a holler, and I'll let you know where to make that application, so.
Thank you. You're welcome. Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ruth Richter, and all of Green Bellevue for making our community a better place to live. Thank you. Now, we have a proclamation for Fair Housing Month. Abby? Abby Highland for the City of Bellevue is here. Did you want to say a few words? Whereas, April 2015 marks the 47th anniversary of the passage of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act in 1968, commonly known as the Federal Housing Act, and whereas this law guarantees that housing throughout the United States should be made available to all citizens without regard of race, color, creed, religion, sex, family status, disability, or national origin, and whereas the City of Bellevue recognizes the housing as a basic human need and economic stability, community health, and improved community relations are sustained by a diverse, affordable housing stock that is available to all, and whereas equal housing opportunity is a condition of life in our city that can be, that can and should be achieved, and whereas only the cooperation, commitment, support of all residents of the City of Bellevue can bear barriers to equality in fair housing and all other opportunities be removed. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Rita Sanders, do hereby declare the month of April 2015 as Fair Housing Month, and encourage citizens and businesses in our community to support and increase awareness of fair housing, promote fair housing practices, and recognize these rights and responsibilities throughout the year. There you go.
Thank you.
6A, Fairview Golf Company, Inc., application for special designated liquor license to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits during a reception on April 18th, 2015, from 5:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. at the Marge H. Durham Student Center, 1,000 Galvin Road South. Is there anyone here to represent? Welcome. You could state your name and please sign in.
Doug Bangston, General Manager, Trigger and Golf Course.
I'll go ahead and open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so. Doug, did you have a few words you'd like to say?
It's the Hall of Fame banquet, we do it every year for Bellevue University. It's pretty much all it is. That 1:00 a.m. is, it's going to be way earlier than that, but just covering all the bases, so.
Thank you. Are there others here that would like to say a few words on this item? See none? I need a motion. Oh, I need to close a public hearing at this time, and I need a motion. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the application for a special designated liquor license to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits during a reception on April 18th, 2015, from 5:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. at the Marge H. Durham Student Center, 1,000 Galvin Road South.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be abstaining from voting for religious personal purposes on each of these liquor license applications.
Okay. Any other discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes, one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 6B, St. Matthew's, the Evangelist Catholic Community, application for special designated liquor license to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits during a fundraiser on May 1st, 2015, from 5:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. at the St. Matthew's Multi-Purpose Space, 12210, South 36th Street, Suite B. Is there anyone here?
Yes, Mayor, I'm Scott Eversole, parishioner and teacher at St. Matthew's School, and we would like to get this license to hold, we started this last year, we have two fundraisers, our main fundraising event that we have in the fall, and then this get-together for the parish and school families, and listed as a small fundraiser also.
Thank you, Scott. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none, a close public hearing. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the application for a special designated liquor license to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits during a fundraiser on May 1st, 2015, from 5:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. at the St. Matthew's Multi-Purpose Space at 12210, South 36th Street, Su- Suite B.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes, one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6C, Use Safe Foods, Inc., doing business Bag &amp; Save, 776. Consideration of the manager application for Stephen E. Williams of the Class C liquor license held by Bag &amp; Save, 776, located at 15101 Harrison Street. Welcome.
Stephen Williams representing No Frill Supermarkets?
I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak at this time, please do so. Would you like to say a few words?
Just here to answer any questions anyone might have.
I see no one coming forward. I'll go ahead and close a public hearing. I need a motion. Mr. Cook?
I'll make a motion, we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission on the consideration of the manager application for Stephen E. Williams of the Class C liquor license being held at Bag &amp; Save, number 776, located at 5101 Harrison Street.
Seconded by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes, one abstention.
Thank you. We take on 6D, Use Safe Foods, Inc., doing business is No Frill Supermarkets, 788. Consideration of the manager application, Stephen E. Williams of the Class C liquor license held at No Frill, 788, located at 1510 Harland Drive. I'll go ahead and open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. I'll go ahead and close a public hearing. Mr. Carmichael?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for considerate, approval for consideration of the manager application for Stephen E. Williams of a Class C liquor license held by No Frill Supermarkets, number 788, located at 1510 Harland Drive.
Seconded by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes, one abstention.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Takes this item number seven, ordinance for adoption, third reading. 7A, ordinance number 3805. Megan, could you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance to amend section 6-1 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to animal care in the City of Bellevue and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
I need a motion. Mr. Preister?
Here, I'd like to move to approve ordinance number 3805.
Need a second?
Second.
Mr. Hanson? Any discussion? Mr. Hanson?
Yes, early on, when this was brought up in the second reading, you know, I'm a hunter, and I've got folks that hunt deer in my backyard with bow and arrow, they come before the council. And as I was talking, I live in an acreage off of Bellevue Boulevard, but I'm concerned on the trapping side of the, of the hunting or whatever, because this time of year especially, I just noticed just yesterday and the day before, I have kids going down there looking for mushrooms all over in that area, they come all the way up from the Camp Wacanda all the way down there, I see kids all over in there, and I'm just concerned, even though that I know that the folks will get their licenses and their permits or whatever, I just think that within the city and this, that's why I would vote for this ordinance, so.
Any other discussion? Mr. Carmichael?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm opposed to this ordinance, and I have several reasons why I'm opposed to this ordinance. First, I'd like to show you, this is one of the defined traps that are proposed to be prohibited. It's called a snare trap. It's a very simple trap. You set it for the size of the animal that is going to be trapped, typically at a pinch point on a fence line, so that you can catch a rabbit or a coyote or anything along that line. This is what we're talking about. We're not talking about a connoisseur trap that has teeth that crushes and maims an animal. These are meant strictly to dispatch an animal so a harvester or fur can sell that pelt for money. As we've gone through this whole process, I've had a lot of conversations with Officer Rec with respect to the legality of hunting. Hunting is, is a guarantee of the state of Nebraska, as is trapping. We have rules and regulations that apply to all trappers regardless of where they trap with respect to being licensed, having their traps marked with a indelible tag, and to have permission to be on the property, and you cannot trap within 100 feet of any habitable residents. That's strictly right out of the Nebraska statutes. The snare trap, in my opinion, is not something that is set that's going to harm anybody in any way, shape, or form. You may get your foot caught in it, but it will not hurt an individual, it will, it's meant to hurt an animal and dispatch an animal. The body trap, that's a little bit different story. That's a trap that's set in a bucket, it's placed in the ground with bait in it, and as the animal goes in to get the bait, it snaps shut and suffocates him. Again, a very humane way to dispatch an animal. The leg hole traps that we presently prohibit in our, in our ordinance, I'm in complete agreement with. I don't think they were meant or designed to ever kill an animal, they were meant to catch an animal by a leg and hold him until a trapper can come and dispatch that. I, I think that's an inhumane way to trap an animal, and I would not ever support removing that from our present ordinance. The Game and Parks Commission, the game wardens, and the Bellevue Police Department are charged with enforcing the laws of the state of Nebraska and the City of Bellevue, and in the context of writing an ordinance for two incidents that occurred with a person that illegally set a trap without permission, without tagging his trap, both on a, probably a state public right of way, and on, I believe, county-owned private or public property, those are things that police officers and game wardens deal with every day. Every one of us goes through legal uses of everything we do, whether it's cars or whatever it is, and people do illegal things with those legal uses, and as they go through that process, the police officers and the game wardens are charged with enforcing the laws and sometimes catching people that are bad and violate the law. In the context of this ordinance, I just think it's fruitless that we would pass a law for something that is, that is legally permitted by the state of Nebraska. for something that is legally permitted by the state of Nebraska as long as they comply with the regulations around housing areas or inhabited structures based on two incidents in our community. The individuals were trespassing on property, and they should have been cited as such if they could have been caught, which I doubt they would have been caught. Last point I'd like to make is that I'm not going to make another point. I disagree with it from that context, and I'll stand by my statement. Thank you.
Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilman Carmichael. I think the law is a hundred yards from any inhabited dwelling, rather than a hundred feet, which even makes it more prohibitive within a city environment. So I think the existing law has adequate provisions in it if it is enforced to maintain our safety within the city.
Any other discussion? See none. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opinions of Councilman Carmichael and Modri, Mr. Hanson, Councilman Hanson as well. This was brought to our attention by two incidents. It's true that two incidents don't necessarily point to policy, but in this case, I think it's justified. One, yes, those snare traps will catch wild animals. They will dispatch them usually quickly, although some have suffered for quite some time. Trappers, yes, are legally able to trap. However, I'm legally able to drive my car if I follow all the guidelines. However, I can't drive over the speed limit. I can't drive recklessly. There are lots of restrictions in place. Most cities in the state have requirements that don't allow these traps in the city because we have domestic animals, and we have cases where domestic animals are caught in these traps. And I certainly wouldn't want, and that's why I introduced this, for any one of your pets, or a child's pet, or anyone else's pet to be caught in a trap in the city. And unfortunately, there are pets that are running wild in the city. Sometimes because the owner isn't responsible, sometimes the pet just gets away, even with the responsible owner. So it isn't just children that can get into these traps. They may be less likely to get into a snare trap. But the body traps also include, in my view, the conabear trap. Those body traps and those leg hole traps are extremely serious, steel jaws that clamp down and do serious damage to a pet or to a child or an adult who may unfortunately step into one of them. I would rather err on the side of caution and allow these traps to be in rural areas or outside of the city limits. Originally, the city banned all traps, and I think that was a good decision. The police would like to enforce that ban, but when they looked at our statute, it says leg hole trap. That's it. They want to be specific on a snare because it isn't specified. They want to be specific on the conabear, all of the traps that can cause potential danger to children, to pets, and even to livestock, because within the city limits, there are some areas that are still rural where we have chickens, where we have pigs and other livestock. And we would hope that none of those got caught in any of these traps. But it, I think, is in the best interest of our children and the city to enforce this guideline on something that, yes, is legal, but the state still regulates it, and the city is allowed to regulate it. And I believe, I don't know about all, but virtually the majority of the cities in the state do ban trapping within their limits for those very safety reasons. And I would ask Chief, if he would have any comments, and he and the police department are the ones who have to enforce this, and I think that they are the ones that, because they brought it forward, they had the complaints, are the ones that are most interested.
Chief Albert.
This has been discussed exhaustively to this point. We've had several conversations with Councilman Carmichael, with my staff. I respectfully just disagree. I'm not a fan of it in the city. But that said, you guys have the information, and the vote is up to you guys. That's your call at this point.
Any further discussion or questions? Please vote.
Vote is three to two.
Motion fails. Takes us to item number seven B, seven B, ordinance number three eight zero six. Megan, could you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance to amend section eight dot zero five dot zero seven and add section eight dot zero five dot zero eight, ordinance number three six one nine, Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding residential and commercial satellite dish antennas to repeal such section inherent to far existing and to provide an effective date of the ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number three eight oh six, amending section eight point oh five of the Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding satellite dish antennas.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item seven C, ordinance number three eight zero seven. Megan, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance to an ordinance to amend sections two dash two six and two dash two nine of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the time and location of regular city council meetings, the elimination pre-council meetings, and the preparation of the agenda for regular council meetings to repeal sections two dash two six and two dash two nine, as here to far existing, to provide for the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form, and to provide for an effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Need a motion? Mr. Preister.
Mayor, I wasn't successful with the agenda, but I would like to defer this till we have a full council, and that wouldn't be until May eleventh, I believe. I would certainly entertain any questions, but, and any comments, but I think we need to make a provision so that any questions to staff are in early enough that it allows them some reasonable time to respond. I think we need to recognize that this has the potential of causing us more staff time in the evening, when it will either be through labor contracts, either overtime for some, and for those that are exempt, it will be time that they will get compensated for time off. So we're not saving any staff time. We may cost more. I have not seen, and I apologize because I haven't shared any other potential solutions to at least five of the nine issues of concern that were raised. And I would like us to at least include those in any ordinance before it's passed and to have a full council here to discuss it. So I would offer that, but since I didn't even get a second on the first time, I would ask for your discussion first, or a second and then discussion.
I would need a motion for that.
Well, they can talk. Well, maybe they can't.
I would like to make a motion, actually, to approve that ordinance, thirty eight oh seven, amending sections two dash twenty-six and two dash twenty-nine of the city code pertaining to the time, location of the regular city council meetings, and the elimination of the pre-council meetings, and the preparation of the agenda for the regular council meetings.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hanson, a second by Mr. Carmichael. Discussion? Mr. Preister.
I appreciate that we seem to be on railroad track, heading the train down the track, and we have the votes, so we're going to make it happen. We're not going to pay attention to consequences. We're not going to listen to the staff. We're just going to move forward, eliminate it, and if there are problems, we'll just look at it later. We can do that. We have the authority. I'm not being critical. But in a sense, I'm saying there are consequences, and we should do a better job, be more responsible than just steamrolling over something. And I see absolutely nothing for when we're going to get questions in, how we're going to allow staff to address that. There's nothing in here that sets any timelines. I've heard no provisions for doing that. I'm just disappointed because I know this council can do better. I'm disappointed that we're just, we got the votes and we're going to do it. If you want, you'll do it, but I don't think it's healthy for a body to not compromise, to not work together. Say we're going to talk, and then to not talk and simply pass something. So with that, votes will be what they are.
Any other discussion? Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. With respect to the additional employee costs, Don, or excuse me, Councilman Preister, we are not going to have additional costs. Those individuals who are directors or in the labor management organization, they get administrative time or they get comp time. Some of them do. So they are obligated to come to these meetings if they have an issue on the agenda and provide information to us. As we get the agendas from the city clerk, I encourage all of us, and I have always encouraged everyone, to contact the individuals that you need to contact if you have questions. They're there to answer those questions. And expediency is the issue. You have to do it in a fast manner because they have required duties they have to do. That doesn't mean they can't take ten minutes to answer an email. From the perspective of of a railroad, I don't think this has been a railroad. I think this is an issue that we've discussed intelligently, and there are some of us that have made a decision on that, and I will stand by my vote based on those points.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Preister, I appreciate everything you're saying, but I haven't been on that other side to experience it, and I don't think any of us have, except possibly you and Councilmember Blood. For me, it is an issue that I don't know what to put into place. I've spoke to Dan, Mr. Burlowitz, and said, "We got to communicate better. We've got to have communication from our directors." If we call them or need to talk to them or respond to an email, and he is assured that there would be better communication. I've suggested on our cover sheet, that that cover sheet, there is so much wasted space that if we would use the margins left to right and top to bottom, we could probably double the information that we put on that cover sheet. That should answer our who, what, when, where, how, why, so that we have the information we need. I'm willing to try it to see what happens. Will we maybe have to come back and make some changes? Maybe, I don't know, but if I haven't done it, how can I sit here today and say, "Let's make these changes to make this happen"? I want to try it. And I truly, for me, I truly honestly believe it's going to allow more people to run for these offices, and it will allow more people, if they need to come to this meeting, have that opportunity. It is nothing about me. It is nothing about my job. I've got clearances through my bosses. It's, as we know, there have been a few times I've missed meetings, but I want to try it, and I'm asking Dan a lot. We need to have access to directors, and we need to have more information in our agenda. And I think those are the two critical points for me. And I'm going to support it because I hope more people will come to our meetings and more people will run for these offices. And that's basically my bottom line. So thank you.
Mr. Burlowitz.
Yeah, a couple of points I do want to clarify, and however you decide, obviously, we'll work with it. But I do want to make it clear, though, and not to contradict Councilman Carmichael, directors, it is a requirement for them to attend these meetings. When I came here, they automatically got eighty hours of paid leave up front because they're exempt. They no longer get an automatic eighty hours. They have to earn it, which rightfully so. It should be that way if we're going to have a system like that. So they do have the ability, if they choose to, to request paid time off, whatever number of hours they do spend at outside meetings. Some choose to, some don't. It's strictly up to them, but I didn't take away that a lot automatically, but do expect that they earn the time. Under our new employee manual that you just adopted, in that appendix, that also applies to what we call unclassified employees. They still have the ability. They have the ability to earn it. There are times, and obviously myself and my directors will make every effort to always be able to provide answers to questions, but there are times where we do have subordinate managers. I'll give an example. When we had sewer rate increases and questions on the collection system, Epiphany Ramos, who is the manager for the wastewater department, is not a director, but she's obviously an expert, and we did need to have her here to answer questions. That does become compensatory time, so I just want to make sure that was understood. I obviously, one of the suggestions that I had made, and I think I indicated it to Councilman Carmichael, is a suggestion. I obviously, at the very least, would hope that you'll clearly make a good faith effort, and I'm not saying that in most instances council members don't make an effort to get questions in. My only intrepidation is that if we get deluged with questions like this morning, and I have management meetings with my managers on Mondays, when we, every Monday, that we not have to have staff basically then take up a great deal of time on that Monday before a meeting to hopefully provide answers to questions to agenda items. We take our role very serious, that our role is to provide good information to you, i.e. the council, to make well-informed, good decisions. I think we've done that. We've tried to do that, and we'll continue to do that. But I also don't want, I hope we don't get in a situation where we struggle at times to do that. We can, our difficulty is, even though we try to provide all the key facts and all the information we think you'll need, we can't anticipate each and every question that'll come up. And we'll do our very best, and a very simple example would be, a few weeks ago, you were approving some new equipment for a security system. And Councilwoman Blood had a question regarding, did we have an existing contract, and who are we paying? And Chief Guido did not have the information because he didn't know ahead of time he was going to get the question, so he used that time, obviously, to go get that information for you for that evening. So, you know, whether you, it's a good faith commitment or something that on the Friday before the next council meeting that you make an effort to get his questions, I know things will come up. I do. I understand that. Because this week, we ran into a technical glitch, and we couldn't get the consent agenda or the regular agenda information out, and hopefully that won't happen all the time, but things do sometimes come up. So we'll make every effort we can, but I'm going to ask then that you be at least, you might say, be understanding or considerate that if we run into an issue where we can't get the information to a question for that nice meeting, that we don't get chastised for it, to put it bluntly, okay? I don't want my staff made to look bad or that we can't answer questions. We will do everything we can. I just don't want to have them put in a bad position. This, these are taped meetings, and sometimes, you know, it can come across that maybe we aren't competent in what we're doing. So I understand what your concerns are. I just, hopefully, again, we can work things out. We'll do our best. I promise we will.
Mr. Carmichael.
One final comment, Mayor. I think as a community, we, and as a council, we have to rely wholly on the professionalism and the integrity of the staff to do their job effectively and be able to respond to those questions that would come up. I agree a hundred percent with Dan. We need to get those questions to them as soon as possible so they have an opportunity to respond back, whatever the question is. With respect to your point about Epiphany or other subordinate management individuals, we pay those directors a lot of money to have that information available, and if those employees are not here or if we need them to be here, the director should be able to answer those questions wholly, as long as they're given adequate time up front. And that's the important thing. They need to have as much time as possible to answer those questions. For forty years prior to the pre-council meetings, this body operated on council meetings. There were no pre-council meetings. The reason that they came to pass was not because the council meetings ran late. It was because there were individuals that were meeting with the city administrator in groups of three that others on the council felt they were getting an unfair advantage or some mechanism that was more than what they were able to get. And they decided to try pre-council meetings. That's what I've been told. I was working here when that happened, so I'm pretty confident that I'm telling you the truth on that. the truth on that. From that perspective, I think it was a good thing, but I don't know that we have made any progress other than to cause, in my opinion, a waste of time and money for people that could be doing more work for the citizens of Bellevue, doing their primary function. And if we rely on them to do that function in a professional manner, I don't know that we're going to have any problems. I'm like Paul. If we try it, and we go back to the way it was done for forty years before that, and it doesn't work, Don, certainly, we can revisit the issue. I would be the first one to stand up and say I was wrong at that point.
Mr. Preister.
And I appreciate that, and I know you're a man of your word. I don't have a problem eliminating the pre-council. In fact, I can use that time because I, between the council meetings, I don't even go home. I stay here because it's twenty minutes to twenty-five minutes, depending on traffic, just to get to my house, and that time coming back. I don't want to waste it, and that time can be used in better spending on other things. My concern is that we addressed the issues, and I'm hearing, I think, people say, yes, we need to get our questions in early, we need to have access to be able to get them answered, but we need to be respectful of staff to make sure they have the appropriate time to answer them. I think one thing we need to add to that, that we don't do two or three pages of questions and hide our questions sometimes, and I'm guilty of this, so I'm looking at me. So, we make it real easy for staff to understand our questions and to be able to respond in just ten minutes, so they don't have to spend ten minutes hunting and figuring out, trying to figure out what we want. So, I'm asking, if nothing else, for at least a verbal commitment, I think that we should reduce the number of things that are in our executive session. I think we're all in agreement to that. I think we should give, at least by Saturday or over the weekend, any questions that we have to the administration and to any staff, so at least by Monday morning, they've got some time to research and to gather the information and to maybe respond to us. And then if we've got follow-up questions, maybe they haven't understood us, there's time to do that before the meeting at night, when they might be looking caught off guard and not looking professional. Because I agree. I think they are professional. So, I'd like to see us have all of those questions in over the weekend by at least the start of the business day on Monday morning, and for some staff, that's seven AM.
Don, you have my commitment on that, and the issue for me is this glitch we had this week with the agenda not coming out in time. Those things happen, and you cannot help when those things happen. However, they come out on Wednesday. If, as elected officials, you haven't read that stuff by Thursday evening, you've got an issue, and you have plenty of time to make those questions available before these people go home on the weekend, because they're not going to be answering their emails unless it's an emergency. I try to get my questions in during the week prior to the meeting so that they have an opportunity to respond or have a response ready for the first thing on Monday morning. Unfortunately, I was out of town and didn't have an opportunity to do that this week. But your points are well taken, and you have my commitment that, at least from Steve Carmichael in Ward One, they will have the opportunity to respond to my questions as fast as I can get to them.
And that's good, and I see other council members nodding in agreement, so I trust their judgment. Councils change. New people get elected. What is committed here tonight is not in writing. It's not in this ordinance. We can only go by our word currently, so in the future, there may need to be something else. But at this point, we're all dealing with trust. This is a council that does all their homework. I respect that you're up early in the morning and answering and asking these questions, and everybody to the person that I've worked with on this council is extremely conscientious, reads everything that we get, from the first page and the first letter to the last, and looks at it and is digging into questions. I have tremendous respect for everybody who does that, week or meeting after meeting after meeting, and is that dedicated to this city. That may not always be the case, and in the future, others may have to deal with that. I appreciate that word, and the other issues, the staffing time, we'll have to minimize the times we ask them here then if we're going to hold those costs down, because I know we're all concerned about the budget, too. So, it's up to us then. If this is going to be voted in, and I'm not wedded to having a pre-council meeting. I could use the time, too, but I want to make sure that we do it with our eyes open, deal with the consequences first, rather than, I just hate being reactionary. Wait till something happens, wait till there's a problem, and then you try and figure out what to do. I like to be prepared in advance, look at what may come, and do what you can in advance. So, that's what frustrates me about this. So, if I was too strong in my choo-choo train remark, I apologize.
Mr. Burlowitz.
Yeah, I don't want to prolong this anymore and be redundant. I appreciate Councilmember Carmichael's commitment and Councilmember Preister. I probably would ask that, to the extent possible, that if you can get questions into us on Friday before that next Monday's meeting, because again, yeah, staff don't sit on their phones on the weekend. In fact, I've been directed by the mayor to quit phoning my emails all week long on my phone. If there are some that come in on Monday, we're going to do our very best. Like I said, we do have management meetings, and so a lot of Monday mornings tied up. If we can get questions the prior week, at least on Friday, to get a good start on answering those questions, that would be a big help. So, with that, that's all I wanted to say.
Mr. Cook.
I just got a question mainly for Mr. Buckley, is what happens if this passes? What happens? Is there a timeframe? Is there, what happens in two weeks? Or where do we go?
The ordinance goes into effect fifteen days from the date of its passage. So, the next council meeting was the twenty-seventh, but it won't go into effect until the twenty-eighth. So, that meeting, that day of the twenty-seventh, there would be one last pre-council meeting if this were to pass.
Okay.
Mr. Preister.
And I would just follow up with that. I don't know if we have, sometimes, we have requests for doing presentations, and they've scheduled their time in at a pre-council meeting. I don't know, the next one wouldn't be affected, but the one after that might be. I don't know if any staff or anybody that isn't even here has done that. We could make a provision to make this effective thirty days, to at least allow for that time, but we know now it wouldn't be the next meeting.
The council can set an effective date for this ordinance beyond the fifteen days.
And I'm suggesting it, but since I'm in the minority today, I'm not going to make the motion, although I think it may be in the interest to at least allow that time.
I'm going to ask Sabrina through Megan, has there been anything scheduled for special presentation at the next council meeting or the next two? Mr. Burlowitz.
I do know at the next council meeting, pre-council, we do have a presentation, is it from Viero, regarding plannings? You know, we're discussing mowing and the various seeding and that. So, we do have a presentation at that pre-council, which would be on the twenty-seventh.
That's the only one she's aware of.
That's the only one I'm aware of, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Actually, that presentation's going to be in the evening one, just before we have the public hearing. That way, people are informed of what's going on.
So, we have a motion. We're still in discussion. We have motion and second. Are there any more discussion or questions? Please vote.
Vote is four to one. Motion passes.
Item eight, none. Item nine, ordinance for introduction, first reading, nine A, ordinance number three-eight-zero-eight. Megan, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend section twelve dash sixty pertaining to the sale, distribution, storage, and discharge of fireworks in the city of Bellevue, to repeal such section as heretofore existing, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be on April the twenty-seventh. Nine B, ordinance three-eight-zero-nine. Megan, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance to add new section nineteen dash twenty-seven to chapter nineteen, article three of the Bellevue municipal code pertaining to maintaining low-maintenance vegetation in the city of Bellevue, to provide for the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form and to provide for an effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. And also, second reading will be on April twenty-seventh with public hearing. Item number ten, public hearing on matters other than ordinance, none. Eleven, resolution, none. Item twelve, current business. Twelve A, B, and C is under consent agenda. Twelve C, approve option number three for the roofing proposal for Kenbrook Roofing, Inc., in the amount of thirty-nine thousand five hundred for the District Three Fire Station, and authorize the mayor to sign the proposal. Mr. Carmichael.
I'd like to make a motion to approve option three of the roofing proposal for Kenbrook Roofing Incorporated in the amount of thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for the District Three Fire Station, and authorize the mayor to sign the proposal.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item twelve E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Siasio Roofing to tear off and replace the roof at Sun Valley Aspen Pool Bath House in the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Siasio Roofing to tear off and replace the roof at Sun Valley Aspen Pool Bath House in the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars.
Second.
A second by Mr. Modery. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
It is Chacho Roofing.
Chacho.
Chacho. Thank you.
Thank you.
They will appreciate that.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item twelve F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the city attorney's contract. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the city attorney's contract.
Second.
A second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Do we need to make a motion to move this one, or did we already do that?
You already did.
Okay. Twelve G has been moved to May eleventh. Thirteen, public request to be heard. Any member of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Number Thirty-five regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states any statement made during the council meetings by the mayor, members of the city council, city officials, employees, or members of the general public shall not involve impertinent or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual so attacked is an elected official, city official or employee, or a member of the general public. And City Code two dash six-eight regarding the manner of addressing the council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers. Speakers shall limit their presentation to five minutes.
Chuck Frederick, one-five-one-one, Madison Street. It was nice to have the publicity for Bellevue winning that national TV recognition, but that was just for one day. If we really want to help Bellevue get to where we want to be, we've got to lower the taxes in this city. The middle of it is the second highest in the state, and we have to increase our services. Our pools are in terrible shape. We don't have that second library. We don't even have even the boxes where the library could drop off. We don't have splash pads yet. We should have had more at this point. The other thing that I'm a little disappointed in, that I haven't had a chance to see the attorney's contract, and you guys voted for it, but we're notoriously, as one calls persons, to have a bad record for our contracts, and I'm just curious as to whether or not this contract has a out where, anytime during the next four years, if we decide to have a full-time city attorney, that he is out without any benefits at that point. So, maybe I'll have a chance to look at it later on. Hopefully, that was, it was written in there, but if it wasn't, I'm a little disappointed. Mr. Preister, one time, last time, said that somewhere down the road, we should have a full-time city attorney. Well, the time is really right now. The other thing I want to talk about is that, or a new idea, is to eliminate that large position. I think it's time we do that. We should have five council people instead of six. That way, the mayor will not have to break a tie. As you know, if I had been mayor last and won, we would have had a new city administrator, a new, we would reduce, we wouldn't have had the, we wouldn't have had the assistant city administrator, and we'd have a new finance director, we'd have a full-time city attorney. Mr. Burlowitz, last meeting, talked for ten minutes about some of his accomplishments, and I'm not going to, obviously, I don't have ten minutes to go over the ones he's all talked about. I'm just going to mention three of them. One was re-禁止 city operations, eliminate unnecessary employee positions, reduction in force for improved efficiency and cost effectiveness. I don't know what's, which ones he reduced, but I do know the two that he reduced was two janitors. And then he said he oversaw improved hiring of several new and existing key employee positions. HR manager, I would not have hired that, or a new city administrator would have not hired one, I don't think. Assistant city administrator, we wouldn't have hired that, and we wouldn't have had, hired two more people in the finance department. Now, we have three CPEs in the finance department, and yet, our budgets aren't good. I've mentioned that before. We don't do a monthly balance sheet. Our financial statements aren't, I don't think, are accurate at all. So, the ones I would approve, of course, was the police chief, the public works director, and the library director. Those are all, those are all good ones that were appointed. The last thing on the page that he's mentioned was that improved overall culture of the city emphasizes accountability, equality, and fairness for all employees. I don't think that was done. I think just the opposite. We don't have the transparency we should have. And it says professional and high quality is serviced as citizens. Citizens I've talked to aren't happy with the services they're getting, so I'll go further in this in the next meeting, but this is all the time I want to take right now on this. So, thank you very much.
Are there others? See none. We'll move on to item number fourteen for adjournment. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to adjourn.
Second.
A second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Next council meeting, April twenty-seventh.